It's Monday, April 11th, 2022, and the time is 5:30 PM. And I'd like to call this work session to order. Our first agenda item, our city updates from the mayor's office, so Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chair and councilors. I do have two or three city updates for you this evening. And the first is the COVID update. The Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment website shows that for the county of Pueblo, the one-week cumulative case count was 19 this past week. It was 18.4 last Monday when I presented an update. The one-week positivity rate is at 1.9, which was about the same as last week. And it shows that there are 13 days of stable COVID-19 hospitalizations for the past week. Moving on to ARPA, there is this evening several ARPA items on the city council agenda. There is a resolution that addresses a request your approval for the first list of items out of the lost revenue governmental services list of 6.5 million, I believe. So that's on the agenda tonight. The initial calculation showed 9.4 as a lost revenue that were available for governmental services. So there will be additional follow-up conversations about planning and particularly where we go with wastewater and what recommendations the mayor brings forward and what directions council gives with respect to the remaining lost revenue calculation. There's also two additional items on the agenda tonight. In one, a first reading, it will bring nine ARPA requests forward that will be on the agenda for final ordinance on 4/25. And there's also a final reading, a second reading. There's two of them this evening, R10 and R11. The city attorney will present the staff report for $610,734 in R10 and the separation of one standing alone for the public department of public health and environment premium pay in R11 for $91,000. We have two other dates for plans of ARPA out of that tranche one. All of the work sessions have been presented and you've heard them all. There will be a first reading on April the 25th for another 41,000, and that is for requests. And the second reading of the Fire Fit Kids will be on the agenda for 4/25 as well. But that will leave a balance in the first tranche of funds that we received last May of $39,016. There's been no indication that the second trunks of funds are not coming. We received last year's check on May the 10th. And so we're about 30, 45 days away from that. If there's a delay, we'll just track it as we go. And Anna in the finance department will start to watch for an automatic deposit. There is one item left out of this first trans request that we're still working on a budget for. And that is with a rescue mission in the community, city trash pickup by a homeless community and how last year's program was short-lived. I think it went from August to October when the weather got cold. This one, we're hoping to extend through the summer and begin it in June. But we're still working on finalizing that budget. We'll bring that when it's finished. That concludes ARPA. There's one other update, and I wanted to share with you. And the mayor's asked me to share the five congressional direct spending requests that were submitted this past week. The five are the pepper sauce bottoms flood mitigation. It went to the Subcommittee of Transportation and HUD in the amount of $940,000 request. And I think that Councilman Atencio had been out with our Stomaro Director Jeff Hawkins to actually walk through and look at what mitigation could happen in the form of creating a detention pond. So hopefully, that request will be considered for funding. The second one is the Public Police Department, a FARO 3D scanner. This was submitted to the Subcommittee for the Department of Justice and Law Enforcement Technology Availability in the amount of $85,537. The third one is important to the south part of Pueblo. It is the Lake Mennequa dredging. It was submitted to the Fish and Wildlife Service Subcommittee under the account of resource management and stewardship priorities in the amount of 1.2 million, which would be wonderful if we were funded for any of them, but that would be very helpful. The fourth one is the ADA bus stops. It was submitted to Transportation and HUD under the transit infrastructure grants for transit capital in the amount of $150,000. I understand if this is funded, and Ben Valdez, our Director of Transit, indicates that we likely would be the first city in Colorado to have 100% of the current bus stops ADA accessible. So that's an important one to fund. And the fifth one that was submitted to the Subcommittee of the Interior was for EPA state and tribal assistance grants. It was for wastewater infrastructure for the Besmer ditch crossings at $433,000. All five were submitted both to Senator Hickenlooper and to Senator Bennett. And they were submitted, I believe, the 5th of April. I have one other update, and that's just a reminder that I owe you upon your request of information with respect to the loan forgiveness. I sent the detail of those that individuals or businesses receive loans. And I do have a follow-up with a reconciliation of where the $5 million of PEDCO money that city council approved in the form of both grants and loans. That reconciliation as it tied to the coronavirus relief fund that came from the Fed to the state, to the city, to the county, to the city in the amount of 6.5. So we have accounting offices reconcile that. I will send it to you electronically before the work session, so you have it as early as tomorrow. And then if you have any questions that we can answer further before next Monday's work session, which will be back to the council's direction on those outstanding 33 loans to small businesses. That does conclude city updates. Do you have any questions now or any information you'd like me to bring next week?
Thank you, Ms. Solano.
There is no R11. Do you mean Q1?
It could be S1. I think they moved from R into S. Yeah, S1. I apologize, but thank you for that.
What other questions are there for Ms. Solano? Can you please remind me for the tranche one funds? Do those have to be spent or are they roll over to tranche two?
They would just roll over all of the ARPA allocation. It needs to be encumbered by December the 31st of 2024 and spent prior to December 31st of 2026.
And when should we expect to hear about the congressional spending awards?
I think it will come independently by each of those subcommittees, but there was notification that it shouldn't be soon, more lengthy than short.
Counselor Flores?
On the second tranche of money that we're going to get, is there going to be any of that money available to any agencies outside the city? It sounded pretty much that that money was going to be kept in-house for infrastructure needs that we desperately need, but...
I think per the mayor's discretion and was waiting for city council to give direction so we could, one, see that we receive the money, and, two, what was the priorities for any infrastructure? And, three, a look back at what was still outstanding that had already been received that was not funded. There are several that were on hold. And so they're still a little bit up in the air to determine before... You know, so all we've done on the website and with any phone calls that come is it's just too early to know.
I was under the impression that we got the full 36 million and that it was going to be parceled off at 18 million for last year and then this year. But I've heard you say, and the mayor say, that if we get that in May... I keep hearing the "if," like, is there a possibility we're not going to get the second half?
From the information that he tracks through the National Mayor's Council and through Bloomberg Philanthropies and National League of Cities and through our direct Department of Local Affairs, there's been kind of an undercurrent of rumor that although we were awarded 36.7 million, that at the congressional level, there could potentially be what they call the clawback of the second tranche of funds to be utilized for either the COVID bill or the infrastructure bill. And last week, Congress passed the, what, $10 billion of the COVID bill without any clawback. And so we just have high hopes that the second tranche of our 36.7, which should be about 18.2, will be received in the coming month.
But there's a possibility that it may not.
Until we know it, you know, until we have it, it's difficult to know.
Yeah, because there's a lot of buzz out there in the media.
Counselor Graham?
Ms. Solano, the balance of the 39,000, is that not including the 700,000 back from the grocery store since they're not going forward with their... Or where are we with that?
It does include the East Side Grocery Store. Received notice that my car top had pulled back and said it's not a project that he can follow through with. The real estate wasn't going to work. His project wasn't going to work. His funding stack didn't work out after all. So when the 753,000 was returned, I think that covered some of the shortfall in the current plan that you have not seen before you in all of the work, all the ARPA requests that have been presented to you. So it does include, and it's part of that total.
So where are we going to get the money if we didn't have that to fund those other...
I would be telling you, and the mayor would be telling you, we'd have to cut and wait to see about the second tranche of funds.
Okay. I thought it was 183,000 that we were over. We all did the math that evening, and now 750,000. So where's the difference in that? That's more than 39,000.
Yeah, the reconciliation of what's been presented to all of you, I will send to you then. So it's a full reconciliation in total of all of the presentations on ARPA requests and how they have been either included in these ordinances, first reading, second reading, and then what's to come.
Any other questions for Ms. Solano? Thank you, Ms. Solano, for that update. Moving on to our second agenda item from the Southern Colorado Equality Alliance. Do we have Tommy Farrell, Ray Packard, and John Mark Hild to the podium, please? And whenever you're ready, Mr. Farrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, councilors. This marks SCA's first presentation to council, though over the years, we have been here many times to accept proclamations and advocate for equitable policy. So thank you for having us. I wanted to start with a brief history of SCA. So the organization actually started called Pueblo After Two in November of 1992. The first meeting was November 7th, 1992, after Colorado voters passed an anti-gay rights law known as Amendment Two. An injunction was passed, and eventually the United States Supreme Court found the amendment unconstitutional. But a group of Pueblo LGBTQ+ citizens realized that the passage of Amendment Two meant that many people might have felt invisible and rejected. They formed Pueblo After Two, determined that no one should have to feel alone or ashamed because of who they were. Over the past 30 years, Pueblo and Southern Colorado have both changed quite a bit. Various programs that Pueblo After Two and SCA have participated in include organizing HIV/AIDS vigilance and fundraisers, holding debates and informational panels, giving people information on LGBTQ+ issues, hosting dances and activities, being involved in state and national LGBTQ+ issues, supporting civil unions, celebrating when the Supreme Court affirmed our marriages to be a right, standing up against anti-gay protests, helping with petition drives, and much more. As you can see, Pueblo After Two evolved into something grand and much-needed in our community. It refocused as needed and progressed forward in the fight for LGBTQ+ equality. Realizing that the future is bright, but we still live in a society that discriminates, our youth group Outfront was formed. And eventually, Pueblo After Two did become the Southern Colorado Equality Alliance. We're 100% volunteer-led. And our Board of Directors, Tommy Farrell, I'm the president. Ray Packard, who couldn't be here tonight, is our vice president. Barbara Bailey is our interim secretary. Skylar Klein is our treasurer. Tom Kerrigan is a member-at-large. Deidre Flummer is a member-at-large. And John Mark Hild, who's joining me tonight, is a member of our Board of Directors. And I believe a founding member of Pueblo After Two, correct? Okay, okay. So as I mentioned, today, we've become the Southern Colorado Equality Alliance. And our work has evolved quite a bit since Pueblo After Two. As we exist today, like I mentioned, we have no paid employees. Everything that we do is 100% volunteer-led. We fund a scholarship through the PCC Foundation. And this year, we're on track to continue granting five $1,000 scholarships every year. We work in conjunction with other LGBTQ+ organizations around the state to support smoking cessation programs for the LGBTQ+ community through the University of Colorado, which has been one of our larger programs recently. And our board recently has kind of refocused on a community support vision. During the pandemic, we didn't have the opportunity to have many of our programs that we traditionally held, but we knew that there were many organizations in our community who were still giving services much-needed during the pandemic when some services weren't available. So our board made a decision, since we weren't spending our money as normally, to donate it to other causes in the community. And we made contributions to the YWCA, the Pueblo Community Soup Kitchen, and have continued building relationships and partnerships with those organizations that provide services for the whole community, but also LGBTQ+ Puebloans. Some of our main programs include the Outfront Youth Group, which I mentioned in our history. They meet weekly on Friday evenings for youth ages 13 to 20. Some of the things that they often participate in include LGBTQ+ Lobby Day, which one Colorado, which is a statewide LGBTQ+ advocacy organization, hosts every year at the Capitol. And we have youth and participants participate every year, go to the Capitol, meet with our legislators, talk about what's important to them as youth in our community. Outfront has also put on various queer proms and dances to give youth an opportunity who might not feel comfortable at their school dances to have a place to go and still participate in that rite of passage. We also have the Transgenerations Support Group, which meets twice... Oh, I don't know where that side went. But they meet twice monthly for individuals who are transgender or just looking for support. One of the largest things that that group does is put on the Transgender Day of Remembrance every year in October, which recognizes transgender individuals who have died of anti-trans violence. So they put together a little service every November in recognition of that national event. And then Pueblo Pride, I think, is our most well-known activity. Recently, I get little bits of feedback all the time about Pueblo Pride, but recently, I heard one that I really appreciated, that there were a couple of Pueblo teens telling their librarian that Pride was one of the only free and safe events for them in the city and that they wish that there were more events like Pride, which really gives me goosebumps just thinking about it again now. But I hear that time and time again from teens, from adults. I remember a story that somebody told me last year at Pride that their grandma was wandering through the park in her 80s, as she does on Sundays, noticed a big event, came over. People just welcomed her, fed her, took care of her, showed her around. She got to see a drag show, and she had the time of her life. And I always think about those bits of feedback that we get, which is why Pride is important. Pueblo Pride happens the third Sunday of August every year. The other thing that I hear all the time is, why August? Pride Month is June. Why do we have Pueblo Pride in August? Well, historically, Denver Pride has been in June. Colorado Springs has been in July. Pueblo has been in August, and it's not so bad to have prides all summer long, I don't think. So I hate the answer, we do it that way because that's the way it's always been. But that is kind of the answer. Pride consists of nearly 100 vendors, including food trucks, community resources, and more. We have fantastic entertainment throughout the day. We always highlight local artists, but we bring in some artists and entertainment from other places as well. Last summer, we were extremely grateful for city council's support of a free shuttle to assist with off-site parking. And we worked through transit, and city council was very gracious in helping us with that because we hold our event in Mineral Palace Park. When you have a large number of people there, parking becomes a little difficult. We were trying to ease that a little bit and worked with the county to find a parking lot. And thanks to the city, we're able to have a shuttle back and forth from the lot to the park. Speaking of the park, we have developed a great relationship with the Department of Parks and Recreation, and we truly value that relationship. And I think that based on the feedback I get from the Parks Department, they value our event. I frequently hear from them that we're the only event that they don't have to clean up after. But we try our hardest to take care of the park and respect the park because we love being there. This year's Pueblo Pride is on August 21st of 2022. We're finalizing the details, so we'll be releasing information for vendors and sponsors soon. And we'll be picking up kind of the process of Pride planning in the coming months and weeks. So that's my brief overview, but I wanted to allow time for questions or anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell, for that presentation and all that information. What questions are there from counsel? Counselor Flores?
Yeah, I wanted to thank both of you for being here this night and also acknowledging that Mr. Farrell does serve on the School District 60 Board. And I want to thank you for that. It's a tough job. I had it myself, but it's a lot of work. You know, I go back to 1992, and that was the year that I was elected to the school board. And it was really disheartening then that the state of Colorado would even put such an amendment on the ballot. And but it almost became a good thing, I guess, because we now have the fact that the Supreme Court acknowledged that it was unconstitutional. And you were asking, in that amendment, they were basically trying to steer things in the wrong direction, that you were asking for special privileges, when in fact, all you wanted is your basic privileges that everyone else has. And the Supreme Court agreed with you. And I think it was a monumental, you know, monumental decision that really, it's hard to believe that it's been 25 years, but time flies, I guess. But I was wanting to ask you, you know, as your city council representatives, do you see, I know you can talk, we can talk all night long about what's happening nationally, but if we could focus on Pueblo, is there anything that you see that we could do either by ordinance or assistance that could help your group or the entire LGBTQ+ community? I think I'd be interested to find out what we could do, you know, to make the environment better.
Thank you, Counselor Flores. I appreciate that question. We... I've always said that Pueblo is a very unique place. I think all of you would agree with me on that, that we are truly blessed to live where we live. And I think that the climate for LGBTQ+ people in Pueblo is significantly better than it is in some places. My biggest asks, and these aren't necessarily specific policy asks, but I think it goes back to that comment about the youth looking for somewhere safe and free to be and to be themselves. And I think that's probably the most important thing any of us can work towards. Did you have any other thoughts, John?
I'm excited to see in the past 30 years, as we actually have had a doctor move in town to work with transgendered people, which we haven't had in the past. We've had to go to Denver, to other places, and so I'm really excited about that. And we've been having some psychologists and things coming forward that we haven't had in the past. And so I see a movement forward. But working with the Suicide Prevention Group with the Health Solutions, we're working on trying to come up with ways that we can acknowledge places that are open and accepting of LGBT youth and all of youth, so they can find safe places. And so that's one of our goals, as well as working with the schools, making sure that the kids are taken care of at schools as well.
Other questions, Counselor Martinez or Tega?
Thank you. I've attended the past probably about four or five at least Pride events, and they were always phenomenal. Everybody is, it's just a really, it's a really cool environment. Everybody's being silly and taking fun, silly pictures. And there's, it's just a really great environment for folks to feel like, you know, we could be ourselves, however that may be. And parking is an issue. I think I have an outstanding parking ticket from there last year. So yeah, that Mineral Palace parking is pretty tough. But what I wanted to encourage you all is, well, I wanted to say thank you for having an organization to provide some of these activities and these outlets for folks to feel like themselves, as I've said before, self-determination is a big deal. But also, I encourage you to come to us with requests for some monies from the city council contingencies to help with Pueblo Pride or the Transgenerations Group, anything like that. Feel free to come and ask us for some cash, see what we can do.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yes, that's great. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from counsel at all? I guess I'm curious, can you talk a little bit more about the smoking cessation program for LGBTQ? I guess a little bit about why there was the need and then what you guys did about it?
Sure, and I think John Mark hit on this a little bit with talking about some inequities in healthcare for the LGBTQ community, and I think that this is part of it. There's overwhelming evidence that the tobacco industry has targeted LGBTQ people along with youth and communities of color and other groups that are a little disenfranchised. And having those statistics, knowing that the rate of tobacco use amongst transgender individuals way surpasses your average person. It was something that our board felt really passionate about, helping offer solutions to people. And the University of Colorado was putting together a coalition across the state to address this issue in various ways. So we joined in. We've had smoking cessation coaches that people could call, text, looking for support and trying to quit. We've offered resources. We have an online resource. Anytime we're at a community event, we try to make resources available as well. So it's been, it's been interesting work and something that SCA hasn't focused on before, and we've learned a lot. And we're trying to advance that as we continue into other realms. We've been working on some vaccine equity as well. So we're a little more focused on the healthcare aspects than we have been in the past.
Great, thanks for that explanation. Seeing no other questions or comments from counsel, thank you so much for your time, Mr. Hild and Mr. Farrell. I really appreciate it.
Just good work. Keep it up.
We'll see you in August for Pride. The next agenda item is the 2022 The next agenda item is the 2022 Safety Jam. So, do we have Mr. McMahon? McMahon and Mr. Lenning?
Hello, we're back. It's been two years without Safety Jam, and we're excited to be bringing it to a new location, a new time of the year. And I've got, for those of you who may not know what Safety Jam is, and there's a lot of new council members, we've got a little slide presentation. We'll just go through that. So, Safety Jam this year will be in conjunction with the Pueblo Classic Bike Race, which was started in 2021. We're excited to be partnering with the folks with the Pueblo Classic and the Greater Chamber to bring Safety Jam into town. We've done it at city parks. And one thing I want to mention, and I echo his comments about city parks, the folks with your city parks are phenomenal. Mike Sexton and Lindsay and all of the folks over there, Mary Beth are retired, but working with those guys for the last seven years, we've done Safety Jam. They taught me a lot, and they are phenomenal people to represent your parks departments to the public. They do a great job. So, we started with Safety Jam in 2013 with an idea. We did it at City Park, at the skate park, and we had about 200 people. Mike cooked a lot of hot dogs that day. And we had quite a few folks won some bicycles. And we had two exhibitors primarily that were giving away helmets. I gave away a couple hundred bicycle helmets that day, Parkview and St. Mary Corwin. City Fire joined us out there. That was a great first event. We, another gentleman started, brought the idea to Mike, and we wanted to do something that was AMRs for the community. We still participate in all the other events that we've sponsored and participated in over the years, but we wanted to do something that was ours. And over the seven years that we did it, it gradually grew every year. The last year that we did Safety Jam in 2019, we had, we went from four exhibitors, three exhibitors basically, and a couple hundred people to 62 organizations that brought out information to people and participated in the event, and over 3,000 people attended. So, it really has become a fun, exciting thing for Pueblo. So, some photos from previous Safety Jams. It's amazing. I've got seven years of pictures of, the one that I want to point out, the little boy on the bicycle, we kind of watched him grow with Safety Jam. He came out and participated there. He's on a regular bike. The first year he was out there, I think he was about two and a half or three, and he had one of those coaster bikes. There's no pedals. And he was still going through the exhibit, or the features out there. And again, just some phenomenal experiences with people interacting with our law enforcement, with our fire, and as well with us, but so many organizations, the Health Department, St. Mary Corwin Hospital, Parkview Hospital, PCHC, Health Solutions, just multiple organizations, Boys and Girls Club, the Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, everybody just kept coming and adding great features to the event. So, for those of you who've never been to a Safety Jam, here's Safety Jam in a nutshell. So, that was our 2016 event. American Medical Response sent a video crew out and created that video. And we've also had Safety Jam events that mimicked what Pueblo has done in Atlanta, Georgia, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and a few other cities have done smaller versions of the event. Really shines a great light on Pueblo. And just as the gentleman said, Pueblo does amazing things. You know, we're not looked at as the highest, as the best city on the front range by some of the northern cities, and I disagree with that. Having worked in all of the northern cities, I think we're the best city on the front range. We can come together and do things for our communities that I've not seen other communities be able to do. A lot of the other organizations and operations across the United States are like, "How'd you get this done with this many organizations?" It's Pueblo. That's how we got it done. So, this year, we've had seven years of doing Safety Jam. Over that seven years, we've given over 4,000 bicycle and skateboard helmets away, all properly sized and fitted with our partners, St. Mary Corwin, the Kiwanis, coming out and providing helmets. We've given away by drawing 370 bicycles, 175 skateboards, prizes for the kids coming out. And then we also have a family gift pack that we give out for people to come out and attend. But the biggest thing again is the education. We have a lot of bells and whistles. We have a lot of fun things because we want people to come out and enjoy the day, but we want them to go home with some education, learning about what services are provided in the community, maybe learning something that knew that they knew a different provider, various providers were in town that do, but they didn't know that they had this facet or that facet. So, they learn a lot from these different organizations. But it really is amazing, the comments that we get afterwards. They're happy to win a bicycle. They're happy to get a snow cone. But they're like, "Wow, I learned something that day," and that's what we're there for. So, this year, we're tying in with the Pueblo Classic. And Dwayne from the Chambers here, anything you want to add to us? We're really excited. The only thing, my boss called me about two weeks after we started, and he said, "Hey, we're going to partner with the Pueblo Classic, and it's going to be downtown." I'm like, "Great. That's a good idea." It's a month earlier. Okay, we'll do it. We'll get it planned out. But everybody has come together again, the way Pueblo can. The Chamber's been phenomenal, the way they're helping us out with moving to a new venue. We're going to be right outside. We're going to be in the SRDA parking lot, parking lot and on Allen Hamill, the same day as the Pueblo Classic Bike Race. So, hopefully, we'll bring in crowds from both, and everybody can get some education and some fun. So, this year, we've got, right now, I've confirmed 32 exhibitors, and I've still, I've got eight emails this morning. We may push 45 exhibitors. Like I said, the last year, we had 62. But coming out of COVID, staffing, trying to get organizations back involved, I'm really excited. We're going to have probably a really close to 50 exhibitors. Pueblo Police Department comes out as always, Pueblo County Sheriff's Department, State Patrol will be out. We have Pueblo Fire, Pueblo Rural Fire, West Park Fire, ESB, Beulah, due to some staffing issues, won't be able to be there. I just found out today. But we'll have vehicles and representatives from all the other organizations. Bicycle Rodeo Pace is going to do a bicycle rodeo, which is going to be a bigger feature. We started with bicycle helmets. We're going to return kind of where we started with our, combining with the bike race. And you can come out, you can, there'll be bikes for kids to ride. They don't have to bring their own. They can win a bike. And hopefully, they'll get to win a bike and ride in the, the community ride with the merit at 12:30. But we want people to learn the rules of the road so that they can ride safely. They can also get fitted for a helmet. We've got up to 520 helmets partnered with St. Mary Corwin and Walmart. They will be sizing them and fitting them appropriately. And they're focused on kids, but they do have some adult helmets. And if you need a helmet, go visit with them, and they'll size it for you. We will be giving away 60 bicycles again this year. We do have a lot of fun events. We've got the Party People Magic Show. Kyle's going to come down and do his magic show. We have the Denver Bronco Cheerleaders, who have been a part of the event since 2014. Unfortunately, this year, my buddy Randy Gradishar, who's been a part of it since 2014 as well, is tied up that weekend. He won't be able to be there. We can't land a helicopter in the parking lot next door. I tried. I was looking at it. I really wanted to. But we will have a flyover. UC Health, which is, their helicopters are now a partner with, in partnership with GMR, our parent company. They're going to do a formation flyover at the presentation of our hometown hero. And Kevin Weber will be our hometown hero this year. That's Safety Jam 2022. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Thanks so much, Chris and Mike, for that presentation. What questions are there from Council? Councilor Martinez Ortega?
Yes, just a comment. I had been to a Safety Jam about three years ago, and it was phenomenal. There was so many young kids there. There was a lot of adults. Everybody was having a good time. Probably about 300 people, and I showed up late. So, good job for putting that together for our community. Thank you. No problem. Thank you. We appreciate it.
What other questions are there from Council? So, it had the flyer for the classic, but I didn't catch a time.
Oh, well, the classic will start at 8:00 a.m. and finish at 6:00. We're kind of in the middle. Our exhibits will open at 10:00 and end at 3:00.
And what's a bike rodeo?
So, the Bike Rodeo Pace will put that on. We'll have an area set up with cones, stop signs, pedestrian signs, and they'll chalk off some areas and put the kids through some little drills. And when do you, when do you stop? Where do you stop in comparison to the stop sign? How do you, how do you look for crossing the stop sign? It's all about bicycle safety, and Pace will be conducting that for us.
Awesome. Well, we look forward to it then. If there's no other questions or comments from Council. Oh, thank you so much, President Graham. We actually have a proclamation that we'd love to present to you all now that you are here, Chris and Mike. So, President Graham's going to read the proclamation, and then you all can receive it.
Okay, this proclamation is for the 2022 Safety Jam, April 23rd, 2022. Whereas knowledge is power, and that power can give an individual the ability to improve their health and well-being, therefore improving their success. And whereas a knowledgeable, successful individual can positively influence others to build successful families, and successful families build successful communities through growth and positive change. And whereas Public City and County Emergency Services, fire, ambulance, law enforcement, hospitals, and other allied health services, educational institutions, other civic organizations realize the value of a strong, successful community. And whereas these organizations have come together to offer individuals and families access to health and safety, education through the 8th Annual AMR Safety Jam Event, intended to improve the well-being of the citizens of Pueblo and Pueblo County. Now, therefore, we, the City Council, City of Pueblo, Colorado, and the Board of County Commissioners of the City and County of Pueblo, Colorado, by authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim the week of April 18th through the 24th, 2022, as the Family Health and Safety Week, and urge the residents of our community to support family health and safety throughout the year. There you go. Congratulations.
It happens all the time. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Mike. Seeing no other than discussion items on this specific work session, I will adjourn this work session at 6:14 p.m.